Well, called to order this June, what is it, June 13th, meeting of the Farmington Area School Board. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This is a work session. Our first item on the agenda tonight is approval of the agenda. Everyone had a chance to take a look and are there any items, any questions about the agenda or any items to add at this time? Seeing none, can I get a motion to pass the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Carrero, second by Doyle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we have an agenda. First item is to review the proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. Jane Hauska, thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely. Goodness. Chair Christensen, members of the board, Superintendent Berg, members of the community, thanks for having me here tonight to have further conversations regarding our 2022-23 budget. As you may be well aware, we are probably one of the only industries where we continually have to try to figure out how to make our expenditures match our revenues. I'm not aware of any other industry that has that task every year of making your expenditures match our revenues. And the other thing that is interesting is that with all of the uncertainty that we've had in the last couple of years and continue to have, and as our political differences continue to grow, not only in the state, in our community, nationwide, the one thing that holds true us as a school district is to continue our advocacy for our students, to make sure that they hear and give us the proper funding to make sure that our students' needs are met. With that being said, we've had conversations that this year is an off-year for budgeting. Technically speaking, the legislature doesn't have to do a thing, right? Unprecedentedly, we had a $9.25-plus billion surplus at the state level. Now, it'd be great if they spent it all and, you know, give it all to education, but I do have to say, one of the things that they did do right is they, they put the money towards the reserves so they're as full as they're supposed to be, and they paid back the federal government the money that they loaned us for unemployment. Two things that are now off of our balance sheet and future generations don't have to be responsible for that, so that was great news. From there, the Education Committee was handed a budget of plus $1 billion. And with a lot of grappling back and forth, the Senate came with three ideas of how to spend the money. The first was to reduce the cross-subsidy of special education to the tune of up to 40%. Now, that would have hit every district's bottom line and would have been a wonderful idea. They also put in a literacy program that they wanted, not sure on the quite details if that would have been a fully funded mandate for the lifespan of it, or if it was just for a couple of years. The third thing that was an interesting conversation was that they proposed letting hourly employees be allowed unemployment. Now, one thing I don't know if people realized in that proposal that it was actually a levy, which meant that districts would have been paying for that unemployment on the backs of our taxpayers. Now, they did say that it would have been offset, I don't know completely or not, by the career and tech levy, that they were going to switch that all over to have that 100% aid instead of a aid levy split, but the actual details, if it would have been 100% covered or zero net effect on our taxpayers, is unknown. And also, there's another lot of logistics around that, like what if you have hourly positions and they turn them down? How does that work? The House came to the table with a laundry list of ideas, right? Everything from reducing our special ed cross-subsidy, our English learners, giving more money to school support aides, to grow your own grants, transportation sparsity. They wanted to give everybody a little bit of money. On May 9th, several education organizations went to the Capitol and asked the legislature to please just focus on special education cross-subsidy, because by doing that, then you're allowing us as a district to figure out how to spend that money with all of these other buckets that you're trying to fill, and some of them, again, were unfunded mandates and caused us more angst than really what they are worth. Unfortunately, the legislature didn't do a thing. And we knew going into this that they technically didn't have to, but then it would have been kind of nice if they didn't even talk about it. If they would have just came out and said, "Well, you know, I know we have this big surplus, but we don't have to do anything, so we're just not going to talk about it." Now, there have been conversations about that there's going to be a special session, and there's been talks here and there. Unfortunately, as time continues to go on, the likelihood of that actually happening probably won't. So it's truly unfortunate. I think we missed a huge opportunity to set education off in the right direction, so we'll see where we go from there. Now, a couple people have asked, "Well, what happens if they come back and give you more funding? What are we going to do?" Well, I always comment with, "Well, we'll move forward cautiously, because we do know that the road ahead of us is not going to be an easy one. We do know that we're going to have a deficit that we are going to have to close, and so we really take that funding and take a good, long, hard look at it before we make any decisions on what we would do with it." So also, we've talked about last year, and we continue to talk about the financial cliff. We have had many different education associations talking about this, and it's all due to all of the funding that school districts got, right, from the federal government. Wonderful idea, I'm not saying that it wasn't. The correct use of those federal dollars would have been to use them on one-time expenditures. Unfortunately, due to the needs of our staff, our students, and our community, we just weren't able to do that. And it's like many other districts, we are not the only one. These dollars will be coming to an end, and we are going to have to face the cuts that we should have made earlier, but we didn't because we needed to support our community and our families. And that leads us into our levy conversation. We've started to talk about that, and I think coming up in this next year, the conversations are going to become more frequently. Our levy currently is due to expire in FY '25. The first time that we can go out to renew and replace our levy is November of '24, and that would give us two chances in order to pass it. Now, that doesn't mean that at any time we can go out and revoke and replace our levy at any time. There's, I think there's three, oh, there might be five. There, I can't remember. There's different times throughout the year that you are able, like in April, and May, and August, November, dates that you can go out for these, but we'll have to have conversations about what is that going to look like. Currently, alls we have in place, and I shouldn't say all, what we have in place is an operating levy, and how does that affect our taxpayers? Do we want to look at a capital levy? Do we want to look at a combination of that? Because all of those levies have different effects on our households and our community members. So we're going to want to take a look at that and how that all plays out. So what you have in front of you is our summary of our budget for the 2022-23 school year, and we always talk about them in buckets. Some people like to talk about them in separate bank accounts, whatever works for you, and we'll be talking about the General Fund, Food Service, Community Ed, and the Debt Service Fund. The first one that we'll talk about is the General Fund, the big one. As you can remember, we started conversations for our budget earlier this year, and we set some parameters in place back in February with our enrollment being stated at 6,725. We also, at that time, put a 1% on our jet-end formula, because we thought we were being conservative with a $9.25 billion surplus, that we were going to get something, right? We also took into consideration, we right-sized our enrollment to, or we right-sized our staffing to enrollment, and we brought our class sizes back to policy, because thankfully and luckily and very appreciatively, due to the 2015 levy, we've been able to be under that, thanks to the community for supporting us in that effort. So as we look at that, we came in, when we were developing it, two things, right? Now, we have, since the legislature didn't pass, we had $500,000 that we had to deal with. We have other concerns that are hitting our budget, inflation, enrollment, hopefully it's going to hold. The other thing that I want you guys to be aware of that will affect us in one way or another is the upcoming elections in November. Who's going to be our governor? How is the House going to shape up? How's the Senate going to shape up? It really could affect the face of education and the funding that we receive. So just keep that in mind. Supply and demand has really taken a toll on us, and costs that we're incurring for everything from A to Z across all of our buckets that you see on the screen. And special education, as we continue to see our children in special education, we may not be growing as fast as we used to, but what we're seeing is the needs of our children are changing drastically. And we're also seeing that we are having to educate those children within our own facilities, because those that we used to depend on aren't able to find staff. So as we look at that, we are looking at drawing some additional funds out of our assigned fund balance, out of our maintaining class size, and also additional funds. We had two other buckets in the assigned fund balance. There was $200,000 for community ed that we had in our assigned fund balance, and $100,000 set aside for LTFM. Now, you may be going, "Well, how can you use that? Aren't these supposed to be used for community ed and LTFM?" Remember, when we put those dollars in that assigned fund balance, they were general fund dollars, meaning that we do have the capability to use those dollars on any allowable expenditures in the general fund. And so we are able to take those dollars, if we'll so choose to, to help balance out the budget. And looking at the CARES funding, we are going to be spending every last penny that we have of our CARES money, COVID money that we received, except we'll have some summer federal dollars left, but those are specifically for summer. We can't use them for anything else. So that gives us to our balanced budget for the 2022-23 school year. As we move to food service, unfortunately, again, the legislature did not pass a uniform or unified free meal policy. So we have a little hill in front of us to communicate out to families, because they've had free meals for the last two years. And the applications that we've seen for educational benefits is down, meaning people aren't aware that they need to sign up for it, and we saw that with people with questions on their iPad when they're signing up iPads over the summer. They're like, "Yeah, we have free meals." Well, did you fill out an application for educational benefits? What are you talking about? So we have a little hill in front of us to communicate out to families, and it's really important, because that application takes effect the day that we process it, and we can't backdate it. So say, for example, that I would qualify for free meals, but I don't fill it out till October, all my September meals I am responsible for. So we're really going to hit it hard in communicating out to families that they sign up for educational benefits, that the earliest we can send out an application is July 1st. We're hoping the USDA gets information out to us, yet here in June, a lot of times they don't get us the application till July, so we're really going to work on that.
Quick question. So then when we push that out with the actual application, so just click it, click it on?
Yep.
Click it on and just kind of spoon feed you.
Yep, and we're also gonna, there's, you can do it electronically as well through our food service application, so we're going to make sure that they have that as well, that they can fill it out right online.
And we need to wait till after July 1st, because we don't have all the forms, number one, and number two, we don't want people to do it now, which would be for technically this year, and then be like, "Well, I just filled it out." No, you need to do another one. So we're going to big push at the beginning of July and then again in August.
Will we push, have the principals push that out? It's they're the ones that...
It'll be both.
Yeah, yeah. So legally, we have to mail it, so every household will get a copy. Yep, we have to, legally, we have to mail it by fed, because it's a federal program. So we will be mailing an application to everybody, but we're going to be sending it electronically, newsletters, we're going to, you know, have it on websites. We're really going to try to make a big push so parents realize what they need to do for it, because it's going to be a huge change. They're not going to realize that they need to fill it out. So with that being said...
Is that something, sorry, is that something they have to fill out every year?
Every year. Yep.
And actually...
Just have it. Okay, thank you. And it has another, that actually has another impact on our budget as well, because we receive compensatory funding based on the number of families and students that receive educational benefits. And so if you've been listening in the news, that's another thing that we've been asking for, is for the state to look at different ways to give out that money, because across the state, the number of those applications have diminished with the free meals, and it's impacted our district, but some districts more than others.
Yeah, that's a great point of, you know, people filling out the iPads going, "Yeah, we've been getting free lunch for a year." Sure, you know, and not putting the two together. That's, that's an interesting challenge to have as the district, as you guys move forward.
Principals, though.
Oh, yep.
They're the ones that know specifically.
Yeah. Yep, so we've talked about it, you know, some different avenues about how to get it out, so we'll continue to do that to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to get people to fill them out. With that being said, I don't think anyone in this room doesn't know of the increase in food prices, gas prices, everything that we do nowadays. In doing, in saying that, for our food service program, we are proposing a five-cent increase on our student breakfast and lunch, and for adult, we're proposing a 15 cent for breakfast and a 25 cent for lunch for the 2022-23 school year.
Okay. Do we talk about 25 cents? I don't remember talking about 25 cents in the plan.
That was just for the adult meals. We only talked about the student meals.
Is that, how many adult meals do we, is it significant?
I'll look, but I, it's not even close to like what we...
Pretty small.
And there, so what used to happen is the USDA used to come out and state what your adult lunches have to be. The last couple of years, due to the pandemic, they've, and supply chain issues, they're like, make, they say you have to cover all your costs. This is what's included in your costs, this is what's not included in your costs. So we have to go through this calculation, and in, when we went through that calculations, that was the increase that we are going to need with the adult prices in order to cover our costs. Okay. One thing to note, when I bring the final budget to you, there will be a decrease in the food service fund balance due to the fact that we need to buy some equipment. Two pieces of equipment. One is pretty hefty. It's a dishwasher at Meadowview for about 70 grand, so you'll see that when I bring the final budget forward. As we look at community ed, as you may be aware of, community ed took a huge hit with the pandemic. They were part of the front line. They had to provide services and receive no funding, and that really depleted our fund balance in community ed. Their goal is to start to dig out of that by, they made adjustments to our staffing. We've looked at our supply budgets, looking at field trips. We did increase some of our fees in our programs to match what they're costing us, and we also use conservative numbers. And so we're hoping as we get back to normal, whatever the new normal is, is that our participation numbers will increase, and this will be a very conservative number, and hopefully it'll only increase from there. As we look at our debt service, this is just inflows and outflows, right? This is the money that we get levy and aid from, from all of the debt that we have as a district. We should be reaching our max here, and we should start to see declines from here on out. We have a little, a little roller coaster, but for the most part, we're on the downward side. So that is our budget for the 2022-23 school year. Anyone have any questions?
I have a question. I have it written down at home, but I can't think of the numbers off the top of my head. For special ed, what are we getting from the state currently for special ed to help pay for those costs, and what has the state said they would give us? I mean, we're only getting a percentage of what the amount is, correct, that they would...
Yeah, usually they say it's about 60 cents on the dollar.
Okay.
Is what we get.
Okay. And what are, what should we be getting in general?
100%.
Oh, Lord, okay.
They should be covering the cost of that mandate.
Yeah. And the state, like, the federal government, they, they have a mandate, I think of it's 40%, and we, we're lucky if we get 14%.
I knew it was a low number like that, something like that.
Yeah.
I know it's hurting a lot of districts, not only us, but...
Oh, yeah. And that's why all of the education organizations really push for special education cross-subsidy, because it would have touched every district in the state of Minnesota.
Meaningfully.
Meaningfully.
Yeah. And just to kind of wrap things up and make sure my numbers are right here, so we're, we were around $800,000 off of what the conversations we had prior to this. It was $500,000 from what we put in the budget, and then as we get updates from the state, we look at our things, and to Jane's point, increased prices, we continue to see special education continue to go up even before, and that's about another $300,000. So, you know, if you take the 800 thou, or the 500,000 out from where we put it in from the state, we were pretty close, we were just about $300,000 off. So, and this stuff ebbs and flows, right? It, we get updates, and we really won't know what needs to come out of the assigned fund balance until we get our, through our audit and stuff, so.
I mean, just to give you an example that already gave me a heart palpitation today, our paper bid, right? We usually spend $50,000 to $55,000. It's over 100. So we're in the preliminaries looking at it, and we just might not be able to buy some of the paper, right? Some of the paper just more than doubled in price, and, but that's the sort of thing that everybody needs to be aware of as we face this coming year. I'm sure it's not going to be the only thing that's going to come up and bite us, that we're going to have to deal with and try to figure out.
You have questions?
I think I'm building on the question that Jane, or the point that Jane just made, but broadly speaking within each department, and looking for ways that may seem relatively minor, but that could add up to cost savings for us. So, you know, for example, and there might be a very valid reason for this, but I wondered, when I had lunch at one of the schools, the tray, we took the tray, but then all of like the sides were in individual little cups, like nothing goes on the tray anymore. So I just thought like, wow, these, we're probably running these through the dishwasher, and they're basically clean, and I mean, just things like that, like that have changed, and there's probably a rhyme and a reason to it, but when you're thinking like...
And I definitely can check into that specifically. A lot of that all had to do with the pandemic and everything being...
Clean, yeah.
Yep, that there's no scooping anymore, everything has to be individually...
Served.
Yep.
Yeah. So do those types of things still apply, do we think, or I guess, do we have to assume these types of things do?
We don't know. I mean, I would assume that there's not going to be a lot of changes in how the food is served. That would be our assumption.
Yeah, and I definitely can look into it and get back to you, but I haven't read that anything is changing on that end of things, which is, it's unfortunate, right? But it's the, it's what we live in, it's the day we live in, so.
Right. Thank you for doing all this, Jane.
I have a simple question. To go back, you talked about the fiscal cliff. I just want to be clear, is that Essar funds? Is that Essar-related funds?
Yes, that's part of them. Yep. So there's lots of buckets, right? So Essar, Essar came in three different buckets, right? It came in our coronavirus, it came in our ARP, and the other one has a long acronym that I can't remember. But, and then there was gover, the governor gave us some money, so...
But these were all, I guess what I'm getting at is, these are, when you, when you talk about the fiscal cliff, these are all... these are all money that was.
COVID money.
COVID money that was applied to things that we normally sort of would have paid for. Things like free lunches, for example. We wouldn't have paid for free lunches before, but there are expenses we would have incurred, but would have gathered money from user, like user fees.
That in additional, in additional staffing and pieces like that.
Right.
You know, that we carried through to make sure that when we came out that, you know, instead of making, to Jane's point, instead of making some reductions, you know, previously we intentionally tried to keep our class sizes lower. We, I mean, last year we went through the process. Anytime we had a weird number, especially in the elementary, we added a staffing, knowing that we had this money. Well, you know, when we look at it this year, that won't be happening this year.
Because I'm trying to get at, I'm trying to get at this. Is the fiscal cliff really an issue that it's ongoing expenses for us? Or is it the shock of then returning the responsibility of those expenses back to the funding that used to take care of them? Whether that was payments from parents for school lunches, for example? Or I know in some cases, when you're talking about increasing staffing, you're talking usually about the substitute teachers that, that you didn't, that were not continuing, right? So those, is there other impacts like that? That's what I'm trying to like, what's the size of this, this fiscal cliff? I remember that, that phrase used in like a federal government context a few years ago. And so I'm trying to understand what the gravity is here for ISD 192.
Yeah. So the free meals actually was a program through the state and the feds. And that money never came to us. So it's not like we had a pot of money. However many lunches we served, they just gave us the appropriate funding for them.
It was just passed through.
It was just passed through. So there was no, we didn't, we didn't, there's no fiscal cliff there except now parents have to start paying, right?
But that's sort of a shock back to the system, what you described, right?
Yep. And then the other fiscal cliff is because, right, we knew students had needs and we needed to cover them, especially this last year. I don't think there's anyone in a school system would say that we couldn't have used more supports within our districts.
Parents, et cetera.
Yeah. I mean, so when you think about it, it's a combination of so many different things. But the fiscal cliff is real. It's, I would hate to say what a number is now, but I think as a district, we've done really good not to affect programming. We've touched one this year. But if we don't receive additional funding, I don't know how we're not going to be able to.
Okay. So, so part of that's just the projected, I don't want to say just. When you're talking about that, you're now starting to talk about the deficits you're projecting for 2324.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure that it's in my head that it's not a separate issue in addition to the ones that I'm.
No, it's combined. It's all together.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess from a finance committee standpoint, moving forward, because we know we're, we're going to be in a deficit.
Yep.
I guess then I, I would turn to you, Jason, on things that we have to, the possibility of cutting. Because when we're looking, it, I hate to say it's heads. It's not.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? I mean, be realistic. It's a tough word to talk about.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, our, our thoughts, I mean, we've talked a lot about this, right? And this is, this goes back to the state doing nothing right now. Because ultimately, you know, they, they walked away and, you know, from the session they had and chose not to do another special session and said, well, we'll deal with that in the next session. That is an issue because even if they come at that time and say, guess what? Well, we're going to take care of 40% of your specialty cross subsidy. So that's, you know, three to four million dollars for us. That, that helps a lot. We're not going to know that until the end of May or June. We are going to have to start having conversations and begin to get community input around what are potential reductions and what are they going to look like in the fall? That's going to have to start early on because to your point, you know, you're potentially talking, I mean, it's hard to, I know we like to put, try to put models and things like that together, but there is still so many unknowns, but it could be, you know, four to six million dollars that you're looking to reduce. Now again, we still have some assigned fund balance money left over. We still have our fund balance, right? And we're not advocating, but we still have those things. We do have some money in some other assigned fund balances, right? So there are some things that we could do if we look at saying, okay, let's bridge it for another year and looking potentially out to look at our community for a levy in 2023, in the fall of 2023. So I think there's a lot of conversations, but the, but in terms of the, the process and starting to engage people around what those reductions could look like is going to have to happen early.
Yeah, I, I fully support that. I think that's the hard part. What I don't want to see is what happened in 2015, and we've talked about this offline, but, and also, whatever, I, we talked earlier, I take credit for not, or take accountability probably at that time, you know, a, a, a seven years ago version of Kyle Christiansen, who wasn't paying attention to this level of school board activity, probably like most people in the community, honestly. But I remember it suddenly in March became the first time most people were really aware of it. I'm glad you're talking about starting to, and we'll have a conversation about community engagement here later in the agenda. But I also agree, we really need to be having those conversations far earlier so that it's not a, it's not a shock to the system. It can't continue to be a shock to the system. Both in trend division was, visualize what things look like for programming in the district, but also for what household budgets looks like. If we're asking for more money through a levy, that's a long conversation and a long time to get used to. And, and also opportunity for the district to continue to demonstrate that we are really managing and doing all of the things we need to, to forestall that to the greatest degree possible, right?
And, and, and again, this is just another unfortunate piece of the, you know, the legislature choosing not to figure out how to spend 1.1 billion dollars is. To have those conversations in the fall is going to be emotional for people. And that's going to be the hard thing. And people could say, well, you can always bring, sure, we could bring them back in June. We could do all of that. That can, that can take place, but the, the emotional toll that that is going to take is going to be a difficult one. And there's just, I mean, I hate to, to just be blunt about it, but that's, that, that is, again, legislators not doing what they should have done. That is going to put our district in a tough position, like many districts, because they're going to have to have conversations around things. And then they might do something, but it's going to be.
Too late.
Too late in terms of being able to not have to go through some of those things that where you might have to go through.
Right. Totally agree.
So.
For this up, for this upcoming year, knowing that we had made some additions to health services to manage the COVID-related impact and from testing and tracking, are those, do we still need that level of health service staff going into this year? Or has that been adjusted?
So that was all through a grant. And that grant expired. Now they're, again, talking to Sarah, Sarah Mayberry, who's been on a few of the, the calls, right? There may be another grant coming through and testing and stuff, so we don't know. But that was a totally separate thing. So we, we will not have that right now. We will not have that level of support for our nurses that we had last year.
Unless another grant comes. Okay.
And they, and they did a great job of being very flexible with how we use that grant to provide additional services. So another grant wouldn't be bad.
Yeah. So just to add on to that is that those dollars in that grant have to be wrapped up by June 30th. And then every district has to give any remaining balance back. And then they're hoping to be able to reallocate or open up grants, you know, July, August for districts to be able to submit to applications to, for any remaining funds that they have left for that.
That was through MDE or MDH?
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, sorry.
Just one more question. On, in the, the narrative you provided, we talked, and we've had this conversation a couple of different, over the past couple of months around supply budgets. I think you talked a little bit about that too. The numbers here say $45 per pupil unit for elementary and 5625 for high school. Is that the 50%? Does that reflect the 50% reduction, reduction from? So my question is, is, are they, are, are our facilities able to work within that budget? Are we, and that's a long way of, or maybe a different way of asking. Are those costs being passed down to teachers or down to parents in other ways?
Well, that'd be a great question because due to us coming out on the positive end of 1920, we were able to reinstate them for 2122. So they didn't have that budget reduction.
Okay.
Right.
For the supplies, yeah.
Yeah. So this would be the first year that they'll have it for the full year of that reduction.
Do we have a sense for that? I mean, how might it have played out if we hadn't had those in 2021, 2022? Do we, do we, like, do our, do our, do the heads of the principals and those in charge of those facilities, I mean, they're, no, they're giving a, they're being given a budget. Do they feel like they can live within that without, again, I'm concerned about the pass through.
Yeah. So.
Other entities.
So they had to begin the year with that, with under the idea that they were cut by 25%. And I, my sense, nobody really said anything. So my sense was that they could figure that out and they could manipulate that. They were, they, they were much more willing in our conversations to have that little bigger cut to the capital budget than they were to the supply budget because they knew that the supply budget, potentially if it was at 50%, had a much greater chance of being passed down. So I think they felt comfortable at the 75%.
Because one challenge, or one thing that I could stand, even back when my kids went to school, was teachers asking to bring reams of paper and all this, and I, it continues on. I would rather not our teachers do that, but go to the PTPs and ask for support instead of classrooms doing that. Because there's families and kids that couldn't afford it, where we actually helped out. And I mean, it, it, the aesthetics does not look right.
The only comment I have to that is we never know when that happens, at least I don't. You know, I don't know when an individual teacher sends something home or.
I guess, let me rephrase that. I would hope that we would have a conversation with our principals.
Okay.
For that. Fair enough, Jane. I didn't write.
I was like.
No, no, no. We can, and that, before she answered, I was going to say, yes, we can have, we can continue that conversation with our admin team.
Because our PTPs, I, I mean, they're, do play, I mean, they do everything. So I can just see them stepping up to the plate for papers, Kleenexes for the school instead of a classroom.
Organizing the drives.
Or organizing a drive for it, yes.
And I, I do know that they were trying, our social worker was trying to get a program off the ground for the beginning of the school year for those families in need. Kind of like where you can come and shop, right? Where you can come and get your school supplies and whatnot. Hopefully we can get that up and running, but if not this year, maybe next year, right?
And even looking at programs, sporting programs, doing them online instead and sending them out instead of printing them ahead of time. I mean, just get creative on that instead of going to.
QR code. Scan to your phone.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah.
Something like that would save a waste of paper.
Absolutely. Especially when it's so expensive.
Yep.
I have seen some districts have, have like an environment, you go in and they have, you know, you won't receive a packet today if you're here for a teacher training because we are environmentally, like, this is a way that we save costs. So here's a link to it electronically. If you need one upon request, you know, you can get it. But that way it's, it's prioritized. It's not, it's a conscious effort to try and decrease that. The other, the other question that I had, or comment, I guess, as it relates to what we'll talk about later with community engagement too, is that there, there are a lot of wonderful community things that are happening to fill some of these gaps. Like almost every church does a school supply drive where you can go get a book bag. And so I think sometimes, you know, one of our opportunities as we talk about community engagement as a board and our relationships with things like churches, PTPs, the business association, is how, you know, how we might be able to make connections either between these groups. You know, I know some PTPs really are thriving and have had a lot of support and others are struggling to find parents to volunteer. And so, you know, we'll be able to talk about that when we dig into community engagement a little more. But how we can, how we can best serve our families.
And this is where I throwback and Dan's going to probably throw something in when he makes this comment.
He looks like it.
But you have a lot of groups doing fundraisers like basketball tournaments. And this is where I can see groups, PTPs taking advantage of something like that where they can raise money for a specific fund to, here, we're going to raise this and get people to volunteer to just work it. It's pretty simple to do it.
And there's also some innovative things that districts are doing. I can think of one example that I, I saw it shared at one of the MSBA highlights. But a lot of the fundraisers that schools host, they take a portion, whatever the organization is, is taking a portion to facilitate that fundraiser. And the district that highlighted, I think it was one of the schools in 196, they said, let's just try it at one school and see how it goes and we're going to pilot it. And it was like, don't sell me, it was, they kind of made fun, but don't sell me your stuff. Just write me a check. And it was wildly successful.
FBS did that. We have a, we have a couple of that have gone away from using any of the organizations and losing the four or 5% off the top and just.
Take whatever you would, your 40 or 50 bucks or whatever you might spend as a family to support that. And it just goes right to the school and to a fund to support the needs of that school and.
They make very good money.
A lot of people like that. I've done that as well, is I'd just rather give directly to the school. What goes 100%.
The downside, the other side of that coin though, and I can say this, what, this is what happens at North Trail. They've run their own, they ran their own.
Fund runs they do now, yeah.
They, they, they used an outside organization and paid a lower fee. And Lisa and the PTP when they, when she was in the leadership, they really did almost everything themselves because the organization they, that they contracted had a model for that. Some don't. When they've gone with the more full service, they've actually brought in more money.
Yeah.
So there is, you may save some, but you also may lose some. So that, we need to leave it to them to kind of figure some of that stuff out.
And most certainly. And that's the thing that those, those buildings and those administrators and those PTPs probably know best what their communities are and can figure out.
But, but back to Steve's point, I mean, the issue there is volunteers. And, and the number one thing everybody who cares about schools right now can do is volunteer. I know the PTPs, I know the sports organizations, I know every organization in this town could use about, I don't know, three, four dozen new volunteers to take leadership positions and help those organizations continue to thrive. But that's, this conversation is getting far afield from the budget conversation we're here to talk about. And my job is to bring us back. Anyway, I don't have any further questions from my, from this. I did want to ask about the supply budgets and understand the fiscal cliff a little bit better.
Sure.
Are there any others from the board? All right. Then we can, thank you, Jane. We can move on to our next item. Which is facility fee schedule changes. Dan?
All right. Thank you, Chair Christiansen, members of the board, members of the community. Just want to continue on, I guess, a little bit with the budget conversation as it pertains specifically to our facilities. This that is shown right now is kind of an ongoing facilities fee schedule. The stuff that's up there on this particular page has not changed. We kind of agreed previously that we would look at a, a two-year adjustment type of a cycle for our fee schedule. For a little bit historical context, for the most part, the intent behind this fee structure is to cover kind of the bare bones operational costs that we incur to allow other folks to come and use our spaces. Sometimes it's a little bit hard to, to get a real hard number on this. A lot of this was a result of comparisons between other like districts, either school districts, cities, so on and so forth in our surrounding community. What I'd like to actually focus on here today, if we could scroll down to the third page.
This one?
Yep, thank you. One of the things that we have struggled with, and it goes back to the conversation earlier here about volunteers. Many of our outdoor green spaces, specifically football fields, soccer fields, lacrosse fields, baseball fields, softball fields, used to be, it used to be the fact that many of our outside organizations were, utilized a lot of volunteers to tend to those areas. You know, folks that would come in on Saturday mornings and they would line soccer fields and you'd have a bunch of parents out there, you know, lining stuff and painting lines. You might have, you know, baseball parents out there, you know, raking fields, so on and so forth. That has gone down drastically. And as a result, those outside organizations have solicited school district support to take on those tasks. We've been doing that. To be blunt, we have been. We've been doing that, um, to be blunt, we have, uh, been in the red significantly because it is not a, um, either a materials or a time, uh, efficient, um, for the most part. It, it's, it's, it's very expensive, um, to do this work. So I've spent, um, a while, uh, trying to get a better sense for what it is costing us material wise, uh, time wise, uh, to do this work from the gamut of, you know, like I said before, um, baseball field, softball field, lining, uh, dragging baseball or, um, chalking of fields, um, baseball, and then, uh, football, lacrosse and soccer lining of fields. What you see there on that, uh, third page, about the third of the way down is stuff that has been added, uh, where it says, um, unify lacrosse fields on down. Yep, that's being highlighted there. Uh, so those would be new service fees that would be added to this schedule. Um, that within reason, I, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that these are going to cover the actual costs. Because this is basically the staff time to do the work and the material required to do the work, meaning like paint, chalk, so on and so forth. You know, there's time to get stuff prepped. There's some other little miscellaneous pieces, but this, I feel very confident in terms of being able to justify, these are real expenses, um, that would be incurred, uh, that are incurred on our behalf, uh, to provide these services. Where it says over there on the right, that's kind of a per service. So that's kind of exactly what it means. If we go out and line a football field one time, that is the cost. Now that can vary. Uh, earlier in the spring, we were getting by with only having to line fields every week, probably two weeks we were managing. Then we hit a spot where we get rain and we get heat and the grass grows and you're gonna line it every week. Or maybe more than that in order for the lines to be visible. Now also keep in mind that once we get beyond school and we get into summer, high school, that as a school district, we are not, we're not utilizing those, um, areas for the most part, um, from a school district perspective. So the other piece that's not inherently on this schedule, um, but that we've had conversations with, uh, with a number of the youth organizations as well as the facilities office and athletic office is that, um, when we are in session for school, that we would split that cost. That as a school district, we're, we're utilizing this. We need the fields lined. We need the fields, uh, you know, drug and so on and so forth. So we will split that cost with the outside organizations. Once we hit summer where basically school district athletic activities no longer require that, then the full cost of that is borne by the outside user groups. I don't, I guess, I would leave it, um, for questions at that point. And I don't wanna run through all the exact numbers, so on and so forth that are on there. Hopefully they're relatively self-explanatory. Um, but to be quite frank, the only reason that we're able to even do some of this stuff is, uh, we did acquire, um, a little robotic painter, um, earlier this year. Which, which A does an absolutely phenomenal job, um, in terms of the, the accuracy of, of the lining. You, you can't match it. It's crazy. Um, but time wise, I mean, the, the amount of time it takes to manually go out there with tapes and strings and lines and stakes and so on and so forth and li, mark all these fields out. Initially, especially initially, um, probably about a, you know, it could take you a half a day, um, to lay out a football field and, um, we can literally paint and, and that doesn't include any of the painting. And we can go out and lay stuff out now in less than an hour and have it be done and have it be about as close to perfect as you can get. And, uh, which is, which is great. I mean, it's a reflection on, on the district, um, and this, you know, the, the, um, facilities that we want to offer. It's something that has been commented on already by, you know, our, obviously our athletic department, activities, folks, um, and, and other, you know, school districts or other entities that are coming in. They know what the quality of it is. That, I will say that, that to me, this is still a very, very fair price. Some of our groups already have, because we could not offer this service in the past, um, have had to hire outside, um, services providers to provide these services. Um, and these costs are, um, well below what I know some of those entities were quoted to provide the services.
Oh, I don't think.
What do you mean by well below?
Probably half.
Yeah. So we, so I, I don't think we should be bashful about charging the cost of items of, of this, cause you know, the district doesn't exist to, you know, subsidize that level of work. It's great to be able to provide the service, but you, you sound apologetic and I don't think.
You're really right. I, I, you know, I wanna be able to, I wanna be able to have a very high degree of confidence that what we are charging is, is something that I can, you know, without question, stand behind and say, you know, these are our expenses. This is what we're paying out, you know, this is what, how many minutes it literally takes for our staff to do this? You know, this is our hourly rates that we're charging. This is literally the amount of gallons of paint that it takes, you know.
And we're not making any money on it. Yeah, it's cool.
No, no, no.
And, and to Dan's, I mean, not defense, but you know, we, we understand and he's worked really hard over the last five, six years to kinda continue to bring this more into an alignment. Also understanding where the district stands in terms of community space and in, in our district. I mean, we have a majority of the green space and we have a majority of the gyms and, you know, we also wanna be able to provide opportunities for people at a reasonable rate so they can continue to do it. So it's that continuing balance, so.
I'd love to see that little robotic painter do its thing.
That is cool.
I assume it was used to line the FHS one and FHS two for the lacrosse tournament a couple of weeks, weekends ago?
The, uh, graduation weekend?
Graduation weekend, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Everything at the high school as well at Dodge.
I go out to baseball on there and I remember we were practicing on Saturday and saw the lines out here.
Yes. Pretty good. Where'd this field come from?
Well, I was like, well, what's this all, anyway, then I found it. It was lacrosse tournament and I told Jason I stopped out here on Saturday and it was wild how many people were out here that day. Parking was actually past, uh, O'Donnell's or Donnelly Farms.
It's surprising.
It was wild.
Yeah.
And anyway, I don't, I don't have any questions about, uh, this. I'm not sure if others on the board do.
Well, the only thing that I would comment on is, uh, these items that are per service or dependent on things like paint that we know could be going up. I know we set the schedule for the year and that makes sense for these other things that we can figure their cost a little more, um, precisely, but I think either adding an asterisk or something that says these are subject to change based on, based on supply and so that if our costs for paint or, or anything are going up, that we can, we have the flexibility to then adjust our prices mid-year or whenever.
Or is it something you need to come back and get approval on, let me see.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I can certainly do that. I mean, yes.
I guess I would make a quick suggestion on that, knowing most of these groups. Great idea to do that, but I think if cost did go up and you went to the groups, ask them to purchase the same product and, and pay for it. I think they would.
And, and I did approach, uh, a group, um, that was, uh, I, I did approach a group about doing that if they were interested in doing. I, I think initially they were a little bit, you know, surprised, um, at, at what the cost of paint is. Because my, my proposal to them was, uh, you know, what would you be interested in buying basically like a pallet worth of paint? You know, sort of a thing, which is what we usually purchase it in, in terms of quantity. So, um, so I, I agree. I think that would be an option to, to solicit that way as well.
We are gonna continue to watch fuel prices too, cause that could potentially be a thing that where we might just, you know, there's a lot of things that we are buying where we have a fuel surcharge and things like that. So that, I mean, so that's just another piece.
All right. If there is no further questions, we can move on to our next item, which is the 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan.
All right. Um, so, uh, maybe to start off with, actually, could you bring up the 917 one first, maybe if you could?
No, I can't because you didn't tell me you wanted that one.
Sorry.
Uh, it's gonna take me a minute, but I will find it.
So just as a reminder, um, so, uh, we are required, um, to, uh, submit, uh, to the state of Minnesota, a, a board-approved long-term facilities maintenance, uh, 10-year plan, uh, every year, um, at this time. Part of that is, um, 917, uh, also has the ability to seek aid and levy dollars, uh, from those communities for which they serve. And, um, if you can, that's fine. It's, I'll be brief here. So, um, for this year, now we were, I was expecting a larger number from District 917 than, yep, should be like $19,000 and down to bottom there in the bottom chart.
Okay.
Uh, I know that they were initially planning to, uh, work on some projects that were going to, uh, impact the ISD 192 taxpayers more so, um, than what has borne out, uh, here on this spreadsheet for, uh, for the coming year. I think that is reflective of some of the things that, uh, Ms. Huska mentioned earlier about them scaling back on some things, making some adjustments. But they are, uh, but the thing that they are asking for as part of our levy, uh, would be to include that approximately $19,000, uh, which is in alignment with kind of historically where they have been. I was expecting more, uh, this time around, uh, but that did not play out. So, uh, that's actually a positive in terms of tax impact, um, on our community. Then jumping back, uh, to, uh, kind of the district information for, for us. So I'm gonna focus on this spreadsheet and, uh, I'm gonna try to be brief with this, cause there's a lot of information on here. It's over the course of 10 years. There's, uh, yeah, don't laugh there. Yeah, you know, this is fun stuff. Um, and, uh, so there's, there's a, there's an aid and a levy component, um, that we are allocated, that we are allowed based upon formulas that have to do with a lot of things, anything from the age of our buildings to the number of, you know, pupils that we have. And so if you delve into this spreadsheet, uh, it will show you, um, basically what those dollar figures are every year for both levy and aid. And then gives us our total that we are eligible, um, to solicit in terms of LTFM dollars. Um, it has been our intent, it has been our approach the last number of years to solicit the maximum, um, that we are eligible for, uh, to fund the projects that we, um, are looking to fund. So, and then if you scroll down a little bit, uh.
Just so you know, it's too big for us to open.
Uh, yes, that one is.
If you go, if it shows, yeah, you have to actually download it. Sorry. Yeah, the, the macros that they run in the background on this file are insane. Because they literally have every single district in the state, all of these mathematical calculations are embedded in the spreadsheet.
There's like 15 tabs.
Of which they made a mistake that we caught as well. So I had to get on the state a little bit, um, so that they could fix them because I just, Jane mentioned something about had a heart palpitation about something that she saw. Yeah, I did too, when I saw that, that salmon colored line right there that talks about our debt service, I think it was. And there were some really large numbers that were there and I went, whoa, wait a minute. What did we levy that? I have no idea about.
Forgot to carry the one.
Uh, they added some other school districts, uh, debt into our spreadsheet. They, 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 they literally made a mistake in terms of the cells that they were pulling from to, to do that. Yeah.
We solve our budget by having.
Exactly. Well, I, 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 I was just happy to see those really large numbers go away from ours, so. And so that, the, the aid, um, and the levy information is in there. Um, and then if you scroll down just a little bit, the key piece that, um, I focused on the last couple of years, keep going, keep, oh, wait a minute, everybody go too far. Yeah, we went too far. Where is the, boy, that is awfully small. Sorry. I can't see that. Um, here. So the, the key piece is that on the, they, and they changed the, uh, what we had to report a couple of years ago where they started, uh, now being inclusive of basically carryover, um, balances. To make a long story short, um, the, uh, what we look to do is to try to, to minimize as much as we can, any carryover balance. We were building a bit of a balance and we had built the balance to about $800,000 for this fiscal year. I'm very glad that we were able to accomplish that, um, because going back to Jane's comment about, uh, and kind of the cost of doing business with supply chain issues, uh, labor shortages, um, all of that stuff that we've, um, dealt with, with construction projects here in the last 18 months, um, definitely impacted, um, the costs of doing business. Uh, and because we had those, uh, funds that were available, uh, to us, we were able to continue with all of the projects that we had hoped to accomplish uh, as well as, um, uh, with shuffling some things around between LTFM and bond dollars, we're able to continue to proceed with uh, other bond work with stuff with the roofs, of stuff with the, uh, the work that's going on right now out at the high school, uh, in the stadium, so on and so forth. None of that, that stuff would not have been possible. If we, if we wouldn't have been relatively prudent and fiscal with being able to have some carryover dollars, um, in this fund that we could shift, um, uh, to get some of that other work done. Uh, so we will be draining the, uh, balance down a little bit. By the end of this year, we'll probably be looking at, you know, I, on the spreadsheet, about $20,000. Uh, and then look to try to build it back up over the next few years so that we're sitting at about 250, um, in there, just, just in case. Um, unfortunately, it doesn't take a whole lot of oops or that broke, um, to, to eat up $250,000 when you, you know, you're gonna spend $70,000 on a dishwasher.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not your, it's not your whirlpool in your kitchen.
In that number, is that the, the, um, 300K for the carpet at River View?
Uh, so in these expenditures, um, so, correct. Uh, so there are line item, uh, pieces that are in, uh, let's see, actually, this is the, if you have the other.
Do you want the other one?
Can you pull the other, yeah.
I got another one.
Yeah. Uh, so what we have to do is break down a year by year, um, kind of, uh, expenditure estimate that is broken out by, uh, finance categories. So, uh, yep. So.
Can you see it?
No. Once again, I, Jane and I were joking about this earlier too. You need a really large monitor to work on any of these state spreadsheets. And so.
Oh, there's the.
If you, so in, so right there at the top of that schedule right now, uh, where it talks about like building envelope, uh, uh, boy, it's still small. Electrical, mechanical, plumbing, those types of things. So those, those expenditures, those line items as they go across would be inclusive of those types of expenses. So your reference to, for example, River View carpet would, uh, fall under interior surfaces. Yep, there. And so, uh, if you go across, so like where you see there about $400,000-ish dollars, uh, in there. So part of that would be the River View.
What about the automation system?
Uh, so that would be under, um, 380, the mechanical.
That's a mechanic, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Mechanical then would be that, the chiller unit?
So it would be those chiller type of units. It also, so that one also is a little bit different because the mechanical, um, is also, so we had the, the, uh, bond that, the, uh, bond that we took out, the LTFM bond for the TLLC to redo the mechanicals there. So those payments also come out of that mechanical category in the annual LTFM funding.
Okay, so it's, okay.
So that, so that bond payment is, is accounted for in that number.
Okay.
Yep.
Is this, is this right here, Dan? Is this where you're talking about the fund balance, this bottom number here?
Yes.
Where it goes to 78 and then you start.
Correct.
So this year you're gonna spend it down to 78 and then it's gonna go back up and get it to about.
Yep.
250.
So if we were, if we were completely balanced revenue expenditure estimates on that, we would be, all of those numbers would basically be zero. But we, we would like to have a little bit of a, little bit of a buffer there. And once again, it, it, you know, there are certain things as, as Board Member Crowe mentioned, that we have planned that are in the works. So, for example, uh, we need to do some, uh, interior floor carpeting work at, at River View. Uh, we have a, one of our large chiller units at Dodge, uh, which does not function. We have, uh, um, some building automation system, uh, software upgrading and things like that, that we need to do, um, at the high school. So those, it's, I, I, I know it seems odd, but it'd be nice if I could even drill into the spreadsheet a little bit more and actually put line item pieces in there. So I keep separate spreadsheets to do that. But those are in there. And then there are historical numbers that I use based upon actual work that we do on a recurring basis that just happens. That I put in there kind of as placeholders.
Okay.
To try to be accurate, so. So that's basically in a nutshell, LTFM stuff, um, for this coming year. And like I said, the, the key piece, I guess the key takeaway would be is that we would ask to, uh, you know, continue, uh, to be allowed to, to go out and levy that, the maximum dollars that we are, um, afforded by, by state statute. that we are afforded by, by state statute to continue to move forward, so.
So the headline for that is, I mean, what's the actual, I mean, is that a, is that a major change from year to year or is it above that?
No.
That's, that's what I just.
No, no, minimal. I mean, it's, it's, no, no. The, the dollar values that we're looking for are virtually stay the same.
Okay.
Because it's dependent, like I said, on, you know, building age, student enrollment. I know we were going to look into it a little bit.
If anyone's watching, they're going to ask, is this going to affect my tax bill?
So I'll, so what I would say is that it, it appeared initially, perhaps, at least it caught my attention, that it appeared as if our actual aid portion of this actually went up slightly.
Which would be good.
Which would be good.
Yeah. People, property tax statements came out, I think, in May, and I know there's a lot of sensitivity around that and who raised rates. And the reality is neither Dakota County nor ISD 192, nor I think the city really raised taxes. What happened was that.
Property values went up.
Well, property values went up, but also the homestead, the homestead is capped, I think, at certain, so when you.
You break that.
You break that, it starts, you, your.
You lose that.
Your homestead credit goes away and your, your payables go way up. So that's, that was actually the, I talked to, I think I talked to Mike Slavik about kind of what was actually going on there and he helped explain that to me, so.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I mean, I, I cannot imagine that an average homeowner would notice anything.
So that's why I wanted to ask.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? All right.
Nope.
Thank you. We got all the money stuff out of the way, I guess, for the night. Now we can talk about the really exciting stuff, the school calendar.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So every year, we bring, not next year, but the following year's school calendar for the board to approve at the end of, of June. And so we do go through a process. So we have a, a group that meets. Lori Jensen does some significant work around putting days in and looking, you know, making sure that trimesters match up. We typically start with three calendars. We really can't do much. We just, we don't have a lot of fluff in terms of the number of days and things like that. So there's not a lot of big changes. The group kind of narrows it down to two and then we get feedback from all of our employee groups around those. And so this is the one that we will be recommending for the 2023-24 school year and just some notable things. So we do start after Labor Day, which is early, which is kind of nice. You see, spring break is kind of in that traditional end of March, beginning of April, where we typically have had that. The last day for elementary will be the 31st, which is a Friday, which will be a half day. So we won't have that weird thing we had this year where we had a extra half day coming back. The last day for secondary would be on June 4th. And then the, the really interesting thing, again, because we were able to manipulate some, some stuff with instructional hours and things like that, we are actually going to have graduation on the 31st this year. So the seniors will be done a couple of days earlier, which if you've ever, seniors are great people. They're wonderful, but getting them out of the building a little bit early sometimes is a, is a benefit because they're ready to graduate.
We had skip week when I was a kid.
Week is good. So, so when you look at it, there's, I mean, no big changes. We still have the two flex learning days built in for a number of different reasons. Winter break is, you know, about the same length, you know, and we just have the typical, you know, professional development days and things like that built in. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, but this is what we'll be bringing back to the board in two weeks for approval.
I always chuckle when we, to myself mostly, when we go over the school calendar because when the Gateway kids, when you were so kind, Jason, and went over there and they were trying to convince Jason that November 1st should be a holiday because all the kids go to school hyped up on sugar and it actually would be a benefit to the teachers if they didn't have to teach the kids. So I always look at November 1st.
There's lots of reasons people want different days in the calendar.
Right. So I chuckle when I, I always look at November 1st and chuckle and go, well, they're in school again.
This might be the most rational calendar I've seen because I see the elementary schools end on Friday, the 31st versus this year was weird, they came back for a half day after Memorial Day and.
Yeah, it, I mean, part of it has to do with instructional hours and what other things fit and that was one of the things that this group went into to see if there was a way to make sure that we didn't have that weird thing. And because they have their assessment days, they actually are going to get out two days earlier, so they worked pretty hard to try to get out. I mean, in a perfect world, I think you'd have everybody done before June 1st, but it just doesn't quite stack up that way with the way the state would like us to do it.
All right. I see no controversies. All right. Our next item is community engagement discussion. Vice Chair Simmons, would you like to talk?
Sure. So as I alluded to a little bit before, this is work that we've talked about with Dennis and going even back to last year when Kyle and I started with the administrators on the committee to try and identify a direction forward. So I'll start the conversation by saying we are looking forward to our retreat at the end of this month and think that as far as pulling that committee together again back after Sue has been seated as a board member and we have a, all of our committees are kind of moving forward with that work with Dennis, that, that will continue as planned. But I wanted to raise the topic tonight, knowing that some of our conversations have centered around timing and summer in particular may be a good time if we want to host things like a listening session. So that came up quite a few times this year. And so the listening session was one and then kind of the either open house or relationship building piece with some of these other key partners in the community like PTPs or churches. Summer could be the ideal time to do that. So since it's already mid-June, wanted to open it up for discussion to the group just to see, you know, is there interest in that as a board? Obviously, we wouldn't all, like, I guess not obviously, we could all attend if we post a notice because we would have a quorum that business, you know, wouldn't be conducted. But I think ideally it would maybe be a couple of us so that, you know, we have, everyone already has a lot of commitments going on. But wanted to, yeah, just open it up for discussion and see if that's something. I can tell you a little bit more about some ideas related to the listening session. So listening sessions can be held around certain topics and again, talking about kind of a consistent framework, community engagement framework and what are the topics at which we would solicit community engagement? What is the language that we would use about that? All of that will be forthcoming as part of that committee reconvening. So this is less formal than that. This is more about kind of relationship building and trying to get a head start on some of the things that we've said are important, I think, before. Some of the heavier and harder topics are going to start coming out. So a listening session this summer could be as simple as posing three questions such as what do you think, what do you think we're doing well? And what do you think our opportunities are? And what ideas do you have? Just three. If you haven't been to a listening session before, they're, they tend to be less formal. So depending on the group, the size, how many people come, you might be standing around and talking, you might sit. The time is typically an hour-ish, people kind of come and go. So open house feel-ish, some people stay longer and they have more thoughts and they want to hear what others are sharing and some want to pop in, tell you their thoughts. So it's really just an additional avenue outside of public comment that we have, right? Which is our current way outside of emails or calls for people to engage with us. So a listening session might be something, using that type of format, a few simple questions, we'd love to hear your thoughts, here are the board members that are going to be present. Maybe we have two of us that do an evening offering for parents or people who work during the day and two of us do a daytime offering, if that's a better thing. So other ideas as far as more of an open house or relationship building with some of the key partners would be soliciting input from this group as to who you see our key partners are. We started a list of that list year, last year, but would love your thoughts too on, we could share that list or just hear who you think that is and if there's anyone missing. And then structure something similar, you know, whether it's an hour or 90 minutes, but an opportunity to get to know each other. I know Kyle and I came in at COVID times, so outside of the relationships that I had coming in and that I've made, you know, newly this year, have not had a lot of opportunity to just get together and engage outside of things like the community expo. So that could be an opportunity for those partners to share their thoughts on what our opportunities are. What would they like to see a partnership, you know, with the school board look like? What, you know, what have they, are they aware of the work that we do? Are they, you know, just again, an opportunity as we go into the year, before we start the school year, before teachers and students are back in the building, to get kind of a head start on some of that, just talking and relationship building this summer. So we'll pause there.
So who orchestrates it? Is that just the board, administration?
Well, I'd be interested if anything like this has been done in the past. I know Rebecca and Jaclyn, if not. Typically, from what's been shared in the MSBA convenings that I participate in, it sounds like the board's kind of orchestrating it, typically looking for free spaces so that it's not an expensive event, whether it's a library or, you know, somewhere in a, in a building, a space that feels accessible to where do you think people would show up? And, and it's pretty simple. So it sounds like the way that they're partnering to get the word out is through district communications. So that could be a website, it could be an email blast. If it's, and just something to keep in mind because the format of these might be a little different or open to anyone, you know, as opposed to different topics that we might be approaching. So the communication or outreach avenues might look more broad or far reaching than things that we would maybe do differently, but.
I like the idea. I guess one concern I have, since it's an election year, especially for board members, is grandstanding, people coming in and trying to take it over that want to run for the board.
Oh, okay.
I think it's a good idea as long as there's set rules, specific and a set topic, one or two, and then if they have suggestions and ideas to, you know, listen, you know, I don't know, we've got to decide do we comment on it, take it down and come back. That would be only my little concern on that part of it, just by meetings we've had in the past when positions were up.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense.
I like what you said too, Hannah, like, you know, this is, you know, the one, two, three. Like this is, it's an hour long, this is, you know, what we're looking for, the feedback we're looking for and what can we do. Really like that, so hopefully that will avoid some grandstanding, but I do, yeah, we, we've got to be cautious of that. But I do like, really like the idea of us doing listening sessions. And I also think too, just for me personally, I know I've talked to Steve and I think Jaclyn, we've talked about it a long time ago, is connecting more with the PTPs and just bridging that relationship even more because they do so much for our district. You know, those volunteers and, oh my goodness, I was on, I was on a PTP when Nathan was in elementary school and it was just, I was, you know, the first couple of PTP meetings, it's surprising how many teachers come and ask for just basic things that, you know, the PTPs are able to provide, you know, like an aquarium or a heating lamp, you know, for, so they could have, I don't know, I think one of the teachers asked for a heating lamp for.
Baby ducks?
Not baby ducks, that'd be really cool. I think it was a hermit crab.
That's what I would do.
So she was taking them home on the weekend. So I think that would be nice too, just to kind of bridge and start, you know, gapping, or not gapping, but solidifying those relationships with the board.
Well, I think some of that is up to, I mean, on our own for the PTP part specifically on that. I, I just think we got to be very cautious because we don't want to say, okay, we want PTPs or we want booster clubs. It's, you know what I'm saying? I, I want anybody in the community, but these are the topics. And I would hope if other groups have specific things like PTP to engage the board, it'd be nice to sit down with the PTPs as a board and talk to them on a separate note or even booster clubs.
Attend their meetings more frequently.
Yep. But I just think we just need to define it a little bit on how we engage it. Because if we're going to set a time, I want to be strict on a time limit because we could be there all night talking and I don't think it's fair for, if two board members are there and one ends up staying extra, we're going to stick to an hour or 90 minutes or something. We're done at that time.
Completely agree.
That's all.
That it's got to have structure to it.
Well, that's my concern is, is the expectation. Like if someone comes to a listening session, do they just assume that those two board members are taking whatever they said and they're running with it and something should happen after that? Like are people expecting discussion? You know, it's one thing to get our personal opinion on something there, but we're not speaking there on behalf of the board because that's not what we do, right? So it's just what that expectation is from the community after those listening sessions.
Yep. I, I think those are really good points and, you know, some of the examples I gave, we have the flexibility to determine what works best for us. So if it's more formal, if it's moderated, if it's, you know, less come and go, we, we can, we can try one, see how it goes. You know, some require that people RSVP ahead of time, A, so that if, I know some board members had shared examples that they, you know, not donated money, but they went, they bought some light refreshments or something. So they asked people to register ahead of time so they kind of got a sense of how many were going to show up. And, and I mean, we don't, I let, I prefer the approach of try it out because I'd hate to say, we're going to do six over the next year and we do two this summer and no one comes, then we're learning, hmm, this might not be the best avenue for our community and there's no point committing to more. So it's more of a try and see and try and meet people where they're at. And so if there's interest, we certainly can just talk about, you know, kind of what the structure would look like or if the questions sound familiar to Jaclyn's point, I think it is important, like framing, especially if it's, if it's more come and go, how do you share the message? We could think through how we put the message out that this is, this is another opportunity for us to hear community needs. So we have a community survey or we can share, you know, some of the different ways that we get input from the community right now. And this is another mechanism by which we would like to hear your thoughts as we move into the new school year. So to, as, as you were saying, not a commitment that anything, but it's using it to inform and make connections outside of what we currently offer, which is public comment and, you know, emails and calls.
I like the idea, but again, I mean, you brought some great points, Jaclyn, on that. I think we'd have to set the stage if we are going to do it in actually verbal writing of the expectations of boards, that, that we are not, to your point, you know, we're not giving our personal views, we're not sitting here, we're not voting on anything nor do we, I mean, just so the public understands, they can come and it's not, you know, Kyle and Steve representing the board, we're here to listen and don't expect this to be on the next agenda, correct? For the meeting and stuff like that.
Yep. I mean, I could, I could pull some of the materials that were shared, like through the presenters at MSBA and just work up, you know, a, a draft communication or flyer and share it with the board for feedback.
Did you say this is something we were talking about at our retreat too?
Yeah, we can keep, yeah, yeah, certainly. I think we'll have time that day to talk about this, kind of as a broader strategy too.
Kennedy and Michael, is this something that you think students would engage in differently?
Yeah, I think most of. I think most students would probably enjoy some, like a time to talk one-on-one with the community, with board members, I think. A lot of students have a lot of valuable, a lot of strong opinions on a variety of topics, so.
Imagine that.
Yeah.
So. Just students?
Yeah.
How do we get the message out though, to, to students?
For student outreach, that might be just, I mean, schoology, I'm not sure. It's kind of hard to do a.
So my suggestion would, I mean, if the board's looking to engage with students, I, I think you go to the school.
With the student council.
I'll be honest with you, I think during the summer, trying to, to gather high school kids is going to be difficult.
No, no, no. Yeah, I just, I'm asking because would students be interested in having that level of engagement with the board? Do they have questions of us? Would, I mean, I wouldn't, obviously in the summertime here, but I could envision maybe the student council hosting a Q and A type of thing for people who want to show up. I, I talked to the ninth grade civics classes a couple, three weeks ago and, and they did not always have a lot of questions, but actually there was also some really good discussion too.
I think there'd be some outreach. I just think, like, like Superintendent Burke said, it'd be very hard to wrangle students, especially during the summer.
I wouldn't even try.
But, but during the school year, more like structured, like the superintendent said through the school, I think that would be a pretty.
I like that. I'm going to tell you why, without giving names or classes, but I know in the past there has been in classrooms where teachers were not too keen on the board at that time and I heard from students. So I think it'd be a great opportunity for us to have that availability for students to come and just to get, you know, we're, we're normal parents, we're normal people and we're here to listen to you and, you know. and we're here to listen to you and, you know, what our actual role is in the district.
Policy issues too.
Correct. Kennedy?
I want to say that the biggest thing is definitely the outreach, but also how you brand the event. If you say like, this is a school board or something, well, kids are like, the school board, like that sounds adulty, that sounds boring, I don't want to go. We'll have opinions, everyone has an opinion, but do they want to voice that, especially to these people that they don't really know? So I think also like convenience of location, if it's somewhere that's not close. I mean, most students cannot drive, if you look at K through twelve, most of them cannot get places on their own. So would their parents be interested in going? So would that think about maybe being at certain schools or things like that? So it's those small things to think about.
Free pizza night?
Yeah.
I go to that.
So, I mean, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing overall is some concern, not even concern, maybe it's just more recommendations to make sure that we're tightly defining the time, the topic, expectations and kind of format for how it might work. I, I, I do think it's a great idea. One thing I also want to make sure is that we're not talking about this as a, you know, some districts in the state over the past year have replaced public comment with a limited format like this. That's not what we're talking about. I want to be very clear that this is additive and another way for, uh, parents and others to express or, you know, connect and cut, you know, get questions answered. Uh, as far as speaking for the board, I think there, even in a, you know, when there's not a quorum, um, there are at least opportunities to add and serve some questions that, that in a full meeting, you know, we're not, uh, we're bound by some of the agenda items, so it's not an interaction with the, the, but in a, in a format like this, you could have, uh, a little bit of that, right? You could limit that, obviously not just on behalf of the board, but I mean, some people were just asking, why did it happen that way? Why, you know, how does the board work? What's really bound and what's, you know, and, and so that, that becomes, um, opening up transparency and making this whole experience a little less intimidating for those who, you know, are just engaging with it for the first time. So I like the idea and I do want to continue to explore it, so I'm glad you brought it up. Is there more?
I forgot.
So a quick question about the retreat, I know it's on the twenty eighth, is it, that was just in the morning, correct? Like eight to noon?
Well, I think we planned on, we asked everyone, but we asked to block the day.
Oh, I did not know that. Fun, fun, okay.
I thought it was.
I thought it was still noon too.
So we may just want to talk about that one, because I have eight to noon on my calendar. So.
What are we going to do all day? Isn't it, I'm, I'm not a joke game, like every retreat you've ever had has been three hours.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, because I have eight to noon on my calendar, that's why it's like.
If we could get some type of agenda then for that, like what we're actually covering, because.
So we're planning from eight to all day.
And if we, yep, and if we don't need the full day, we'll end early, but we should have a draft agenda after we meet with Dennis next week, I would think, don't you?
Yeah, the sooner the better.
It's, there's, there's two main components because you're asking. I mean, there's the strategic plan work that has been, you know, they had, um, the full process that we've gone through with, uh, well, sorry, what's that group called?
Cambria Group.
Cambria Group. Um, so that group met and finalized the strategic plan components for the most part at the beginning of May. And so there's some board conversation around that. But the intersection point then is the operationalization of the strategic plan with the work that we've been doing with, with Dennis. So the agenda is strategic plan, operational plan and board plan, along with like next steps for kicking off the financial, like the committees, that, the rest of that committee work that needs to get done, that we really want to get done this year. So there's, there's a lot to talk about.
And the board's never landed on a three-year governance plan. We introduced that in one of the sessions, so that goes into that. The other part two, the board had asked Dennis to work with us around a model, a financial model. So, um, we met with Dennis a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, um, and went through a bunch of those things. So I think, you know, a, a simple agenda to Kyle's point is strategic plan, um, how that fits into, um, the work around, um, monitoring reports, our scorecard, um, those pieces, an introduction to the operational plan, which is a managerial part of it, but we want to make sure the board understands the connection of our operational plan of what it looks like to put our strategic intent into action. And then that finance piece, and then, um, to what Kyle had talked about too, the, the continuing work around, um, around the, the committees and things, so.
Okay. And it'll be really important for any of the drafts that Jason or Kyle sends out ahead of time to read those in depth before you come to the meeting. Because if, if the draft operational plan, the draft, uh, board governance plan, draft, I mean, anything that we have created, we're trying to do the work ahead of time, like give you something to react to so that we can spend that day talking about anything like that we need versus you won't have the time to read through and really digest it, um, when you get there. So just make sure that you've done that before you come.
Thanks. Um, if we're done with the community engagement discussion part of the meeting, then we can move on to the next one, which is just the board meeting schedule for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. I've, I, based on our conversation the other day, this may be less of an issue now, Jason, but I do think long-term, we need to have a conversation about how, uh, kind of realigning the, the, the board meeting, um, structure. Simply put, right now, we meet on the second and fourth Mondays of each month and that's creating a lot of logistical challenges for some of our other programs. Also, you know, we talked about community engagement, a lot of our PTP meetings are meeting during the time we're here for, um, for school board meetings. So there's kind of some, some board priority or opportunities that are being missed. And there are some other logistical channel and challenges with, for instance, the music program. We had a lot of instances this year where board members needed to either duck out, miss, uh, or skip, you know, board meetings so that they could attend things for their kids. And those programs, uh, are, are very difficult, um, to move because they're trying to organize themselves around, uh, athletics. You know, Tuesdays and Thursday nights become difficult, church night is Wednesday night. So there's, anyway, Monday night for most, we, we meet on Mondays because there's just not that many conflicts on, on Monday nights from other extracurricular activities. The only reason we seem to be meeting on Tuesday and, or the second and the fourth is that the city council is here on the first and the third. But we do have other facilities we can meet in, assuming we can meet a requirement of streaming or you haven't, using technology to stream, that's a, you know, that's a requirement. I think we want to, we obviously want to continue for our board meetings, um, which is something that I don't think we quite have yet, but is underway. So I wanted to bring this to the board as an opportunity to move our meetings. Whether or not that happens for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, or whether we first do it the following year, I want to start having that conversation so that we are, um, yeah, I guess, you know, meeting our objectives, yes, but also providing the breathing room for some of our other programs and opportunities that we've got as a board, um, to gauge with our stakeholders. So that's, that's sort of my proposal, whether or not, again, with, uh, Jason, we talked on Monday, it sounds like some of the logistical things are mostly hammered out and, and maybe hammered out to satisfaction, right?
Yeah, I mean, I know we have, we have some things that take place on Monday night and that's, that's simply working with those groups to, to stay off of board meetings as much as possible. I think we've, we've had those discussions before, but it took a much more active approach in terms of those pieces and things.
Oh, we're asking them, my, my, my heartburn is we're asking them to bend to us and, and, and I think that there was, I think the expectation was asked of you to do that at some point.
Yeah, but I, but I do think if we went to the first and third, I don't think it would, I think we would run it from a school activity sort of thing. We would still run into school activities. And the reality is we have so many things going on. It's hard unless we start looking at Sundays for some of these things and some other things that we traditionally haven't used. I'm not talking about for our meetings that we're still going to run into, um, school events that take place on board nights.
We did talk about earlier start times too.
I would add, be proponent of five thirty start times.
I support that. Um.
But that's just me.
Well, let's talk about that, because I, I, I agree with you, because I, I think the.
Yeah, Michael has to find a solution, right? That's it.
The agenda's out in advance, so parents can make accommodations, just like ban, for any ban for an instant. If they know they want to come to the meeting earlier, they're just going to have to accommodate the schedule on that. You know, I think it'd be easy, well, probably easier for you guys too, instead of hanging out all day. But I don't know what impact that would have. I mean, if people are going to come, they're going to come regardless of what time, in my opinion to the meeting.
That's another, that's another, uh, probably another good solution. I mean, our meetings typically, uh, well, except for a couple of marathons that we've had this year, um, are you what, usually hour and a half? I mean, we're at an hour and a half now for this one, but.
Long meetings this year.
What's that?
We've had a lot of three and four hour meetings this year.
Yeah.
A lot of them.
True.
So I wouldn't say, I mean, yeah.
We had a lot of heavy lifting.
We have.
There's been a lot.
When we talk about early time, what, what, what's everybody thinking? I mean, what's realistic, I guess? Five o'clock, four o'clock? I mean, I don't know.
It depends on people's work schedule. I, like honestly, for me, I think for work sessions, because those tend to go longer, the earlier we could start those, especially for them, like if it was just right after the end of the workday, would be better. But I'm flexible, right? I work from home, so it's pretty, it's easier for me, but.
And who knows what future board members will have, but yeah.
Um, you know, and our public comment for work sessions are at the end of the meeting, so it wouldn't be like a huge hurdle for people to have to get there if we started early enough.
That's a good point.
And the other thing to consider is if we did want to move dates or anything and not have them here, do we stream our work sessions then? Because those do tend to go longer, do we just audio record those? I don't know if there's a way to actually see how many people view those or watch those.
Yeah, you could go on YouTube and, and it'll tell you how many times it's been watched.
I will tell you from a board member standpoint, I do like visually going in and seeing it instead of an audio, because I struggle, who said that?
Yeah, it was really hard.
That's just me personally on that, from a board member standpoint.
I'd second that.
I do like the fact, I do like the idea, I should say, of going to five thirty. I think that's great. My only concern would be future board members, you know, if they work in Minneapolis or whatnot, are we limiting some good candidates running for school board, knowing that they're not, they may have issues if we do like a four thirty or, you know.
That's just something you have to account for if you're going to work for the board then.
I think most works would accommodate, I, I, I'll speak for our work, I know they would accommodate, um, of having that conversation.
Yeah, one or two days a month.
Yeah.
That would be my only concern. I, I would love to do them earlier. I mean, personally, I'm, I'm all for it. And I know that, you know, you guys are hanging out, you know, you're ready to get home too, and so it's.
I think a realistic time is five or even four thirty, but again, that, that's, I'm flexible too, to your point on that, Jaclyn. But I don't know how early is too early for, for people, that, that I don't know. So.
Thoughts from all of you? You don't care?
I mean, selfishly, um, I have high school sports practice right after school. So from a student standpoint, especially Michael and I coming, um, we would just miss a practice or I know sometimes there's like, um, events on Mondays, very rarely though, at least for what I do. But, um, other than that, like missing a day of practice is not the end of the world.
It's harder, I think, to dip into the workday, you know, the eight to five workday, because I still end up with meetings at four thirty and, I mean, it's, I, I think it's harder to do that, but I definitely, I think we can consider starting earlier. We, what, when do we, when did these meetings used to start? Seven o'clock? We already have moved.
Six thirty, we used to start at.
Five thirty wouldn't be a huge dip.
No, I, I know, we, we, we start earlier now than we did when I.
Yeah, it used to be two thirty.
We started at six thirty and we moved it to six.
Yep. And then we had a bunch start at five thirty because they were going to go.
I can't remember if we ever started at seven, I don't know.
Based on. Jason, based on the logistical stuff we're talking about, would moving it at five thirty, would that help to solve some of those things immediately too?
Well, I, I mean, I think if you, you're five thirty, I mean, I think to Jaclyn's point, right? I mean, our work sessions have gone a little longer, but I mean, with all the COVID stuff that we've been dealing with.
We've had negotiations this year and the.
And, and we've had more public comments, some of those things, but, you know, your business meetings shouldn't. I mean, if we take care of the work, right, that they shouldn't. And that, those for sure would take care of, you know, some of those things. You know, it would afford some flexibility or at the very least afford the flexibility of a board member coming for part of the meeting. And then if they have to take off, then they could go and stuff. I think, um, I think we just need, would, would need to be cautious of saying that we would, we would move, we would get out of the school conflicts if we moved to the first and third. I think we would still have some.
I'm asking if we moved earlier, would that help alleviate some of the pressure?
Moving earlier would be a better option than trying to flip to different, to a different Monday set. I think you're still going to run into some conflicts if we stay at the same time on the first and third.
Um, is a reasonable step then for, just to keep the dates that we've got for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and move it to five thirty?
I, I think, because we, we're still not quite ready at the lecture hall to do the streaming part of things anyways.
If we don't, if we're not moving Tuesday, if we're not moving Mondays, we can still do it here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah. So I mean, we, so I think that takes out the, being able to switch to the first and third. And I, I mean, again, speaking selfishly for us, I mean, switching to five thirty is, would be welcomed. And I think that.
You can come at five, Steve.
When does the school calendar go to print, the one that all families receive?
Uh, that would be an Andrew Baldwin question and he's not, the, the, the school calendar that goes in there.
Hasn't gone yet.
It hasn't gone yet.
If we change it to five thirty, they would have time to print it though.
We haven't even set the schedule for next year yet.
Yeah, we haven't, that, that comes in July, right? No, June.
We're talking about it. Oh yeah, we set that after the first of July.
The first, yeah.
Yeah.
And the other thing too, we had kind of a unique year, but to, um, some of the meetings will always run long because we choose to only have one meeting some months, three months out of the year. So, I mean, unless we would like to have two shorter meetings, we can just, I mean, those will always be long because we have a month worth of work to catch up on, so.
The only thing is, is that the board made the decision to go to one is because of conflicts.
Yeah, like because the fourth. Because the fourth Monday is during spring break.
Or.
Pretty big conflict.
Or in December, it's, there's holiday and things like, I mean, you're talking about holiday concerts and things like that. So to try to get two in there.
Lots of stuff going on. May two, right?
May two is another one, so, yes, to spring break, but the other two were ones that.
I don't know what it says in my head, went right to spring break.
Just something to think about when we're talking about long meetings, it's because we have a month's worth of, of work to do, so.
Are school board meetings in the official calendar for the, that she mentioned?
Flip one.
Okay. And dates and times or?
Yeah, it said six PM in mine.
I think it says six.
Okay. Uh, do we need to make a decision on this now?
We'll vote on it in our next meeting or have further discussion.
I think by, I think when the board approves the calendar for the next year, that's when I think the final decision needs to.
And that's at, that's next meeting, right?
I think it might be end of July.
I think it's in July.
July eleventh, okay.
Do we only have one meeting in July again?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So it's scheduled.
And that's, I mean, that's just something to consider when we look at that schedule and the dates, that even if the fourth one falls, if we'd rather have two shorter meetings, we could move. We, we have the flexibility in those months, so it's just, I think, would we rather have one long one on those months? Or would we rather have two shorter ones? Because the work has to get done either way, so.
If it starts at five, I'm okay.
I would rather have one long one then, especially in like July, it's the middle of summer. If we can just have one meeting, especially in December. So, yeah, I'm a proponent of just the one long one if we can do it.
Let's then.
Three months.
Okay, uh, it sounds to me like, at least for now, we'll keep with the current date schedule, day schedule. But that we would look to moving it to at least five thirty and we can continue the conversation now when at the retreat and then make a decision in July.
I'm still here at five, but, okay.
All right.
You can lobby for that, Steve, over the next couple of weeks.
I'm with you on that.
All right.
It's six thirty AM.
No, you, we, you've had, we've had a couple of those.
Yep.
All right, all right, thanks for entertaining that, that discussion point. That ends the regular part of our, at least the work session discussion topics. We've got some policies to run through.
Okay, yep, I will kind of go over these and Mary Ann can help me if I mess them up real, real bad. Um, policy two oh three point five, school board meeting agenda, it's, there's no notable change. It was just MSBA adding another, um, Department of Admin Advisory in their legal references. Literally none of the verbiage changed. For two oh six, public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons. Um, let's see, where did my note go for that one? It just, um, changed the title to match Minnesota statutes. Um, and then it also took out requesting address for public comments, which we already adopted earlier this year. They write it on the card, but they don't have to publicly announce it. Um, for policy two oh seven for public hearings, um, if you look at it, there's just a verbiage change based on MSBA recommendations. Nothing substanti- substantive, that, I'm not saying that right. Substantial, thank you. Uh, policy two oh three, school board committees, this was, um, based off of kind of what we had worked with Dennis. And it just reflects the charters for the various school board committees. Hopefully everyone looked over them because there's a lot of specific changes in there. I do, I don't know if you guys want me to.
But you're just copying and pasting in from what we did at the work session into the policy.
Just making those changes official. And then for, um, policy ten twenty, addressing school board member violations. Um, so again, based on what, uh, the work we did with Dennis, um.
So this is a new policy, right?
Yes, a school policy, because we have a policy establishing a process for the school board would follow, um, wait, let me read this. Yeah, it's establishing a process that the school board would follow if a member is not following, following policy two oh nine or the school handbook, um, because we didn't have anything in place before. So basically it's a four-step procedure. There's a private conversation first and then a discussion, uh, at the public board meeting, followed by censure if needed, and then removal from the board.
Would the process include repeatedly saying five P M when everyone is.
It's already on step two, I guess. We're meeting, skip the private conversation altogether. So those are, and then, I don't know, there, there's F on there, discuss your own funds from the sale of donated assets. I'm not sure, Mary Ann.
So we added this at the executive committee because there was some, uh, and at the April eleventh meeting, we asked, uh, for some policy to come together around how, uh, disposal of assets are treated, uh, when they were donated to a specific program. There's been some specific issues, so Jason, I know you had some things you wanted to bring back.
Yeah, so we're just looking for more, as we continue to write, to try to, to put together a policy around, um, some of these donated assets, um, it, we kind of went down a couple of different rabbit holes. So we wanted to get back and, and check with the board about what was the, we kind of know the general intent, but are we talking about anything that's donated? Are we talking about things that were donated specifically from booster clubs? Or would this include P T Ps or anything else? Um, if it wasn't designated, clearly if it's designated that, um, you know, that, that somebody wants this money to be used for X, and when, you know, the, the lifespan of X is over, the resale of that goes back to the program, we would do that. But, um, we're just looking for some more things, because it's, for us, it, it, not only, you know, the policy is one thing, which is probably the easier part of things, but trying to do the tracking is going to be the bigger, um, thing that we're going to have to figure out, because things that we're talking about potentially are going to have a lifespan of fifteen to twenty, twenty-five years, and they're going to outlive us. And so, um, how do we track that? How do we, how do we continue to, to, to make sure that something was purchased with, um, you know, either it was donated specifically for, from, from a group, or purchased with dollars for a group, and then match that up twenty years later, that it's the same thing and not used from general fund dollars and things like that. So I guess we're just, we wanted to get some more clarity around that before we, we kind of put things together. If it's supposed to be more overarching, or if it's more specific around, um, you know, things that are, are, are donated. And our, our thought was, you know, right, if it's a specific item that was donated, or money was donated to purchase a specific item, um, we weren't quite sure if the board's intent was, well, they donated ten thousand dollars, but didn't specif-, you know, specify that. And then the group went out and bought twelve different things. If we're supposed to, to track that as well? Or how, how narrow or how wide was the board looking at this? Because it can get pretty deep.
I think, no, go ahead, Steve, you got.
I have some great questions, because I'm, you, you kind of opened Pandora's box by what you said. Now I'm thinking, because I remember when I was lacrosse president, we donated and bought uniforms. So to your point, I mean, that, yeah, I, I understand where you're going with this.
Because the one thing that we, I, I, I understand the intent, but the other thing that we, we are, we don't have the ability to do is become an auction house.
Right.
You know, and I think potentially, right, yeah, we. So, well, Miller, he was the assistant principal at the high school, he always talked about the floodgates. But, you know, people would say that, well, that's going to open the floodgates, and he'd say, well, I yet to see the floodgates open. I mean, I, this worries us a little bit more, because if you start to see access to additional funding, right? I mean, are we going to have garage sales where we're selling uniforms and things like that and stuff and so.
Personally, I think if they donate an item, not a dollar amount, an item, like, now, now we'd have to be consistent if we allow booster clubs, then I would say that opens the door to principals and their buildings. If somebody donated a, a, a desk, you know, how, how do we manage that then? Do we, I mean, how, why do we open this up?
Or do you donate, I mean, P T Ps donate playground.
Playground, correct.
Well, yeah, again, I.
It would be more tor-, I would think that would go more towards the school in whole. I would think we need to keep it more specific, like if it's a booster club saying, like with the, with the instruments, I think is a great, you know, they're, they're like, we have all these instruments. But then you brought up a great point of discussion, the last time it was brought up is dumping grounds. Like you get twenty clarinets all of a sudden in one year and we don't need them. You know, we need to learn how to say no or swap out or whatever the ones that we have.
What we take in is in working order, that'd be another piece that we talked about, which would be something to do, but I.
So I think it needs to stay within that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I need to show. I just think that it needs to stay within that organization that it was donated to. But if it's playground, that's more district, more school.
But again.
How do you, right, how, how do you?
But I guess the bigger question, I, I understand your point, right? I mean, so if somebody donates a tuba to the band, they sell it, the, the money goes back into the band, and we'd have to figure out, because we don't have agencies accounting, we have to figure out where that goes, I understand that. But I guess the, and I understand, like, P T P donates the playground equipment, right? And at some point in time, they're going to get new playground equipment, so they're going to sell the playground equipment. I, I get that, but, and I understand the money would go back to the building, but my question is, are we, where are we going to draw the line in terms of trying to track and keep of all of these things and where they specifically go back? That, I guess that's ultimately the question.
Tracking, I think, would be back on the people that are setting it up. That would, the onus would be back on the booster club or.
P T P. There's so much turnover there though.
Yeah, and they wouldn't have the access to the district records on inventory of those materials, right?
But, but, but what I will say is every year financially, as a booster club, you have to turn your finances in, and part of that can be the spreadsheet of all the information on it. There's your tracking for both the district and that, but it would be up to that group to own that.
We'd have to match, we'd have to make sure that we, somewhere along the line, that we match serial numbers of things of when it was purchased and when it was sold and.
So I guess the question back to you, Jason, is what are the parameters that make sense? I mean, the idea that something donated, be donated in working order is to me a good requirement.
Yeah.
Right? Because accepting goods that then have to have a bunch of money put into the repair to make them. I can't, I.
To the band's credit though, that was a creative way to try and fill a need. And with the hope that additional funds could restore some of these too.
The booster club could pay for it to get it fixed, but then that should go back to the.
Correct, so you got to figure out, there's a little bit of figuring how that works. I'm, I guess, again, the question comes back to what do you think are the parameters that help make that manageable? Is it a doll, is there a dollar amount? Is there something where after ten years, we're not going to worry about it anymore?
Jane, is this just a logistical nightmare? Can we just be like, it's a gift, why don't you give it to us? You don't get to have any say over what happens to it after that?
Well, but that's, there's been.
Can't we do that?
Well, that's our, our, our current, our current procedure is that when, when district takes, when the district takes ownership of anything that's donated, anytime that it is sold, right? Which, I mean, it doesn't happen a, a lot, but when it is sold, it just goes back into the general fund. And the general thought was, again, this is not right, wrong, or indifferent, right? That there was general fund dollars going to maintain it, clean it throughout the process of that, and, you know, is it a balance and, and stuff like that? And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, that's just where we have landed with that.
Yeah, I, I get that. Well, you, you could also just, you could also just treat those costs as sunk costs and just give the, the, the money back to the program. I think those are equally legitimate ways to view the, the use of that money. But then you do need to put in some requirements to say is, we're not going to make some, we're not going to take in something that's, uh, non-operational and make it operational just for the sake of.
Reselling it.
Well, or, or getting it so we can use it. It needs to come to us in a way that we can use it, or else it's not a value, right?
Um, I think, I can't answer your question right now, because I think we spun and spun and spun, so.
And, and I don't, I also don't think we would be having this issue if we weren't in the financial situation we're in right now, where items were sold with the hope of, by the band program specifically, we had public comment on it. You know, items were sold from the band program, they thought they were going to get the money back into the program, and then we're told that it was not going to be the case. So it, it's created some heartburn and created an issue, I think only because we're in this situation where capital budgets have been cut and, and, and whatnot. I don't think it would be the issue, were it not for the special circumstances we're in right now. But it does pose some interesting questions. If I donate a ten thousand dollar item to North Trail Elementary, my favorite kids' school, um, all three of them are my favorite kids.
So, so, so what I, so what I, based on the question, Kyle, what I.
I would expect that to come back to.
Maybe what we need to do then, go back and, and have a little deeper conversation about what we think is some guardrails and parameters and, and bring it back and maybe.
And I could definitely see like, you know, if it's sold for less than fifty dollars, you know, let's.
Sure.
Right, it's not worth the hassle.
What makes sense, right? Let's just, so that's my question back to you, what makes sense?
Yeah, I, I think the hard part is.
Talk to our stakeholders about what makes sense to them too, hopefully they're being reasonable.
Well, yeah, I, I think my, my, um, my gut feeling is, is that if there are groups that see the ability to sell things that were given to them as a additional fundraiser, that groups that have not thought about it before are going to think about it.
Oh, so you actually just said this in a way that I hadn't heard before. You're saying, hey, donate a bunch of stuff, now we'll sell it.
Well, I, I, no, I mean, that, that could be, but I mean, I'm saying.
Like then a parameter should be, it's been used by the program for at least a year.
Yeah, 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 I, I just think is, is a, we have not, we, the way that we've operated through our procedures, it has, we have not allowed groups to access the money that's been sold for things that have been donated to them, things within their program or things like that. So most people haven't thought that way. If we put a policy in place that says that if something is donated, or you purchase something with donated money, right? You can start looking at our athletic teams of the things that are donated to them. You know, there's a significant amount of things that those booster clubs donated to. They, they may reevaluate, you know, how soon they may want to sell something, stuff like that. I think there'd be more people that are looking at that.
Create a problem.
Than typically, and it's not, I, I don't know if it's a problem, I just think more people are going to think that way than would have typically thought that way. So I think it's a little harder to put on, to kind of think, I think we're going to have to think a little bit harder around putting something together that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, because other areas that I would throw out there that I could foresee that are so non, non-music related, um, those areas, I would say like tech ed. You know what, I've got five cordless drills sitting in my basement right now that I don't use. Here you go. I'm going to donate them because they can be used. Maybe lifespan is a couple of years, now I want to go ahead and sell them, auction them off, recoup that money. Other, uh, I've auctioned, I mean, things, I'll, I'll throw special ed equipment out there as well. Um, stuff that gets donated by the community, um, for special ed purposes. I mean, there, there's just, there, there's a lot of unique items that will weight, uh, physical fitness-related exercise types of equipment. Once again, we try to set parameters around some of that stuff, but, you know, there are a lot of people that do have worthwhile, usable equipment, um, that we could use, that departments could use. That, that, that's, that's what I would worry about. We, we've tried, we've worked really hard to not do exactly this, which is take a bunch of donations that then we become the clearinghouse for, to either auction them off or to literally physically just dispose of. I think, I do think some parameters like, should be in working order. It, it pertains to donations or of materials or money for, specifically for a purchase, has to be used by a program for X years. Resale value is above X dollar threshold. You can start narrowing the window to make this a little easier to manage.
I think a little bit what you said, I think the resale value is probably the key there, because getting, selling something for fifty dollars, right? You got to sell a lot of things for fifty dollars for, to make things, but if it's over a thousand or two thousand or three thousand, I think that, that changes things and actually gives you a usable amount of money to do some things. We'll have, we'll, let us go back and.
It, I think it provides a framework, and then you can, we can talk to stakeholders and say, does this, that's, we're, you're doing work of balancing the ask with what's being asked.
Yep.
I think there has to be a need for the donation, like not just taking a donation because, oh, it can sit on the shelf until, you know. I mean, there are things that you can say, okay, we are going to have an influx of this, yeah, we, we have, we will have a need for this. But just to take donations just because they're donated to, I think.
Correct.
There needs to be some precautions put in place there.
It's been able to be used for X number of years.
Yeah, or like with sports equipment, if there's a new donation of, of really good helmets, football helmets or whatever, which is great by the booster club. And we have all these other helmets that the district doesn't need in any school, you know, within the schools or whatnot. And if we want to sell them, you know, hey, we're going to, you know, communicate that we're going to sell these, we'll get five hundred dollars for it because of this. And, you know, how are they going to use that mon-, maybe there's got to be a need for that money? You know, because like with the band, it was more of a need with, uh, they needed to clean the instruments or whatever, and that's why they were trying to get the money to do stuff like that. So I just think we have to go back to the, to the need, do we need the.
So the, the, the cleaning of the instruments?
We might be going down a little bit of a wormhole here.
Right, there were, there was something that, they, they wanted to use that money for something specific. I could be miss.
Well, but we just have to remember that every organization is going to say that we want, there's something that we want to use for a specific.
If, if something is donated and, and then it's used and they get their use out of it, who's, who's actually the one selling it? Like taking it?
Dan Miller.
I don't know, I still just think like, you donated it, you get no say what happens to it after that, as long as it, the funds stay in the district, that's where I'm at.
We'll go back and we'll, 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 we'll put some stuff together and we'll, we'll bring it back.
Thank you.
We just needed some more.
Did we clarify anything?
Well, I, I think, no, I mean, I don't know it, yes, yes, no, and maybe. I think Kyle brought up some good things to help us, but I do think too, it's, I think the board also got a little bit of an idea of the things that we were thinking about, you know, and potential, right? We think this might be a really good thing in this circumstance, but it needs to be able to apply across lots of different things. And Kyle talked about, how do you narrow that down so it's manageable? So you're not taking in a bunch of junk, right? Those sorts of things, and so yes, I do think it was helpful.
And Jane, you have a lot of, you had a lot of things on your plate this year with everything going on, and I, I certainly don't want to see you.
She gave it to Dan to sell.
Having extra stuff and who's got what, and yeah, that's, yeah, that's a lot to put on someone too.
All right, I, I think we've, oh, sorry, are we?
It's fine.
All right.
I do have a couple of comments on policy two one three. We kind of skipped over it. Um, no, that's okay. Uh, so for the school board committee, I would just propose that we, under the descriptions in section three, um, A, where we have the descriptions of each right now, uh, they're pretty detailed and capture everything that's in our charters. Charters are more flexible and easier to update, so I suggest that we pare down the description in the policy, and that makes it more broad and easier to stand. So by that, I mean, I would leave policy committee and the first sentence for each, the scope of which includes, you know, the high level thing, long-range planning and finance committee, the scope of which includes review.
Would we link to the charter the way we did, like for instance, with the memorial policy and link to as an addendum?
You could, otherwise in my mind, they, once we have these firmed up, they just get posted under our school board links where we have our committees.
Though, like what's there is just the sentence, that is one sentence. So what, what would you, and.
Nope, if you read.
For three? Like this, the scope of the committee includes review of one-third of the district, that is one sentence. So what would you want to be pared down?
Review and propose MSBA model policies and statutes, yes, it's one very long sentence that includes all of the responsibilities in the charter. So what I was saying is that I would keep, limit it to one sentence that's more general for each of these. And then I would, on our website, on this committee assignments page, link to our charters right, right here. So you could see, here's our assignments, here's who's on. And the other thing too, um, as far as revising and paring down the language in the policy, it makes the policy evergreen, which it's going to last a little longer. Um, if we do make changes, it also removes the specifications of who's on it. So right now, you know, for community engagement, it says director of elementary learning and director of I T. Well, maybe it, next year, Jason chooses two different people. So it just makes the policy, the purposes of the policy is more broad and longstanding in the charter is where we can change that in a day if we need to, because it's, it doesn't require. Right, three readings and a full board review.
Do you want to recommend some language, or do you want?
We have to meet then as a, yeah, we'll just meet as a policy committee and then have to reevaluate it. And do we start the readings over then? Like, well, do we have another second reading?
No, I don't think so.
Or do we send it out ahead of time for review and?
I think you send it out ahead of time.
And I, I, yeah, if you need help, I'd be happy to, I think most of the charters in the first one kind of cover. I just pulled up a couple, but have kind of that broad.
No guarantee that this will get reviewed before our next meeting, just FYI, but. Cause Mary Ann and Lori and I would have to figure out a time in our schedules, so.
I'm also happy to go in and just add four sentences if that would be helpful to keep it moving for our next meeting. It wouldn't take me no time.
I'd say send your recommendations to the policy committee, yeah.
I'll do that.
If you can meet, worst case scenario, we pass it on June, July eleventh when we meet. That's a business meeting, so we can do it then. Do you have another?
No, that was the only one.
I didn't mean to pass over.
Nope, that was the only one.
All right. So that's the end of the policy discussions. The next item on the agenda is public comment, but we don't have any. So at this time, um, I need a motion to close the, close the meeting per Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero three for labor negotiation strategy.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Carrero, second by Coletta, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are now closed.